Mr. Chairman, this is the law state note that you request approval of this affirmative title of the Dean of Business Affairs of Maryland. The next move now, while he has been here for service as the Dean of Business Affairs of the college. The Act of the Fourth includes the proposed resolutions along with the President's conclusions. Does it appear to be item two, establishment parking fee or increase of parking fee at Maryland Institute?
Mr. Chairman, this is Maryland Military Institutes' request to initiate a fifty-dollar per semester parking fee at the college with review towards raising additional funds to support the parking infrastructure at the college. There is need for repair and expansion in life of the number of vehicles that the students have on campus. So the college is requesting an increase in the current parking fee to fifty dollars per semester. Any questions?
It appears to be moved into executive. Item three, policy two of three, compensation for college presidents. This price.
Good morning. So, new policy two oh three oh five is before you for consideration and approval. In giving your approval, the current Presidential Salary Schedule A would be deleted as of October one, two thousand and eighteen, and the compensation of presidents would be determined by the Chancellor in consultation with the Board. The policy itself is pretty straightforward. We do not make this recommendation lightly. It is the result of several years of discussion and months of focused research conducted at the Chancellor's direction by Roger Bates, Michelle Sylvester, and me. And we do think there's a great opportunity to provide a more equitable approach determining compensation of presidents. Some background is in order here. Our current Salary Schedule A has been in existence for more than forty years, even before the creation of the Alabama Department of Post-Secondary Education. So it harkens back to the days when this system was an arm of the Department of Education and reported through the Chancellor to the Superintendent of Education and the State Board of Education. Over the years, it has been modified, but it has been a very lost time since there was a serious attempt to align presidential compensation, national trends, and the involved, excuse me, and the evolving and heightened scope of duties and responsibilities of the technical and/or college, community college president. In fact, if you look closely at the compensation of our presidents and the compensation of local superintendents, you will see that presidential salaries are fairly close to the top fifty percent of local superintendents. And our state's highest-paid superintendents are compensated at a higher level than many of our college presidents. Now, that is not to cast aspersion on the state superintendents and the job, sorry, the local superintendents and the jobs that they do, but it does beg for a review of the salary of college presidents. I think the publication Inside Higher Education put it best recently when it stated that community and technical colleges now sit on the front lines of policy discussion about rebuilding the nation's economy and future. Both the data from the College and University Profession Associations for Human Resources, that's COOPA HR, two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen administrations in higher education survey, and a focused review of the approach to presidential compensation of several southern states confirm that Salary Schedule A prevents us from being competitive and attractive options for the best candidates. It is also a source of some frustration for the great presidents that we already have in this system. We know they don't enter this profession for the money. But we also know that to some degree, compensation is an indication of how we value employees. And it's time to take a new look at how we do that. So, we're recommending abolishing Salary Schedule A and moving to salary ranges based on categories. In terms of the new approach, we are working on some internal guidance for you and the Chancellor. It's a work in progress, but let me share some of our thinking. It makes sense to us to group colleges into categories according to FTE enrollment, which also pretty much well aligns with their budgets. Using FTE as a starting point is not unusual among the states. We've been most impressed with the concept and approach Virginia has taken, and that has guided our thinking here. We're thinking about five categories, and in examining our colleges, they sort out pretty well in those five categories. We also think the new approach will very nicely work with the presidential contracts that will also call for short annual evaluations. The Chancellor has already started rolling out that concept. Certainly prior to our July meeting, we will have fleshed this thinking out in more detail, and we will share. Oh, one more thing, very important. I do regret that I was not able to provide this policy to the Policy Review Committee in time for their review and feedback.
We can still do that.
We, I have.
Ms. Chairman, I would just say that I appreciate the efforts that have been made. I think this is something that we know we didn't do for a while. It's, it's an effort as we strive for excellence in everything we do. And it comes with a cost. And competition these days is fierce for excellent leaders, to retain excellent leaders and to attract them. And I think this is the appropriate path. Appreciate all the work that's been done.
Thank you.
Item four is policy six oh six point oh one, compensation for Alabama Community College Assistant Personnel. Ms. Sylvester.
Good morning again. The proposed policy changes to policy six oh six oh one, compensation for Alabama Community College System Personnel, has been vetted through the Board and approved by the Board's Policy Review Committee. The proposed changes reflect the following. First, the creation of a short and concise policy identifying personnel cover and further addresses president's authority to approve local salary schedules. Secondly, the deletion of the Presidential Salary Schedule A, since the presidential compensation will now be addressed by policy two oh three oh five, compensation for college presidents. Third, the deletion of reference to other ACCS salary schedules B, C, D, E, and H, as the categories are listed on the salary schedules approved annually by the Board. Lastly, the policy will become effective immediately upon your approval at your next month's Board meeting. Are there any questions?
On the second page, she has somewhere State Board of Education resolutions. We need to clarify that better.
The State Board of Education resolution?
Mm-hmm.
That is, that is the source of record for the creation of the salary schedules? That was the origin.
Okay.
Are there any additional questions? Thank you.
Item five, policy nine oh one oh one, approval of college mission statement.
Today, we're recommending approval of policy nine oh one oh one, which would require review and approval of each college's mission statement every two years. The policy also requires the Chancellor to develop a review schedule which was included as a draft in the materials. The policy ensures that the Board is in compliance with SACCIOC Principle four point two. That principle requires regular review of the mission statement. Our colleges that are currently under affirmation this year have been receiving questions from their review teams about the regularity of mission state, review. SACCIOC's thinking in this is that the Board should reaffirm the mission statement whether or not changes have been made, thereby keeping itself apprised of the stated and approved scope of institutional activities. The policy is also a response to the SACCIOC workshop held in early two thousand and seventeen, and I think Mrs. four, you attended that workshop, where we were told there would be more heightened review of the Boards of Trustees' activities, not just for Alabama, but for all SACCIOC accredited institutions. Looking back at our files, it looks as though as a system, we have been reviewing policies on average every four years. You will see on the proposed schedule that this year, we recommend you review one half of the institution using a pretty good pace, starting next month. Beginning in two thousand and eighteen and in the following years, we will move to a quarterly review and approval of mission statements. Any questions?
Item six, recommendation regarding designation of the main campus of Southern Union State Community College.
President Ellard is away, attending a conference, so I'm pitch hitting, pitch hitting for him. And I'm pretty much following the notes that he and his Wadley staff have prepared. And I do want to be clear that Wadley staff was very instrumental in preparing this action item. This request is to change the main campus designation of Southern Union State Community College from the Wadley campus to the Opalika location. The change would take effect January one, two thousand and nineteen. So the official main campus mailing address of the college will change, and the U.S. Department of Education will recognize Opalika as the main campus for the purpose of correspondence as well as financial aid. The Wadley location would then become an instructional site. And I do want to make this clear, as there have been a few questions about what happens to Wadley, of course, it will continue as an extremely viable part of this institution. As you are aware, Southern Union was formed in nineteen ninety-three as a result of a merger of two esteemed institutions, Bethlehem College founded in nineteen twenty-two and needed to the state of Alabama in nineteen sixty-four, and Opalika State Community College created by the Legislature in nineteen sixty-three. In the subsequent years, Wadley has established a premier athletic and fine arts program. Anyone who has visited the campus has seen the superb athletic facilities, and anyone who has attended any of the theatrical productions knows that is second to none. The campus is home to approximately six hundred students, and Wadley's population is seven hundred. The Opalika campus, located in the powerhouse Auburn-Opalika area boasting a population of a hundred and sixty thousand and rising, has established itself as the college's largest campus. More than four thousand students are enrolled at the college, at the campus, and Opalika distinguishes itself in delivering career and technical programs as well as top-notch academic programs. With it being just a few miles away from Auburn University, its relationship with the university and its transfer rate are very strong. Your materials provide data illustrating exactly why designating Opalika as the main campus is really just with common sense. For example, seventy-four percent of institutional scholarships are awarded at the Opalika campus, and eighty-two percent of total tuition and fees are generated there. As a side note, I just want to let you know, I have not included data regarding the valley location as it's not a factor in this particular decision. With this change, the student population will not see much, if any, change in student services. Both campuses already house a president's office, dean's offices, faculty and division chair offices, library services, police presence, placement testing, special needs tutoring and counseling, orientation activities, et cetera. None of that will change. Also, both locations house an admissions and records office, business office, financial aid office, human resource, resources office, IT offices, and a switchboard. At this time, there are no plans to change that as well. We are not required to seek approval from the Alabama Commission on Higher Education for this change, but your approval is necessary as we prepare the request for SACCIOC. The submission deadline is July one, and the college is prepared to meet that deadline. As your approval would not come until the July meeting, the college is seeking permission from SACCIOC to supplement that application on July eleventh, and that is the day that you would give approval, with documented evidence of that approval. We've been assured by SACCIOC that this is not a cumbersome process, and as soon as they approve it, then we will make application to the U.S. Department of Education. Any questions?
Is there any cause associated with the?
Not at this time, no.
And then was there any pushback or any comments from the community?
I don't know about comments from the community. I'd have to ask Mr. Ellard, but he did not express anything to me. I know that the Wadley staff, members of the community, are very supportive of this action item. They think that the data itself illustrates that it's time for this change. And at this time, there are no changes to some core services at all.
Item seven, salary schedules twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, Alabama Community College Assistant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For your review, we have attached revised state salary schedules that contain a two-and-a-half percent wage increase. The Legislature's given funding to assist in that increase. As you can see, the president's schedule, Schedule A, has been deleted based on our previous discussions. Any questions?
Item four, these salaries begin September.
Right.
Which is budget year, August begins October. Then felt like it was worth while, find a way to make that, make this begin.
Any comments? Thank you.
Item eight, sale property for Calvin Community College.
Good morning, Mr. Thompson, that was four, Chancellor Baker. Should have powerful presentation pull up, one item to talk about today. Back in March, we received a request from the Prior Field Airport Authority to purchase five acres of land that we currently own at our Calvin campus. This property is located at the northeast corner of the Calvin campus. The reason for this request, the airport is experiencing increased demand for air travel due to the increased economic activity in the region, so it's a very good thing right to make this. The area question, the land they have requested to purchase is shown in the yellow box. It's located north of Calvin. Currently, we talked to Calvin, they have no plans to use this land either in the near term or at all. Given this location, the best use for this land, if they ever were to be built, would be airport-related facilities. Calvin does have adequate land, both within their campus to build new buildings should that need arise, and also adjacent to Calvin, there's attractive land, approximately twenty-nine acres that could be had. That tract of land is shown on this image, sort of the blue-green area at bottom left. We've got three different numbers with regards to the value of this land. The Airport Authority initially mentioned an offer of a hundred thousand dollars for land. We received a raised value of a hundred thirteen thousand dollars, and then real estate agent gave us a price of a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. So the price has yet to finalize, so I think we're looking somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred to a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. This proposed action will allow Calvin Community College, along with myself, Mr. Ryan, to actually finalize the terms of sale, to then be presented to the Board for your consideration at that date. Now, I have big two questions, my.
Thank you for working on this. I've been approached by board members of the Authority, and they do have a need with all the economic growth in our area. It is certainly really critical for their needs and their, I think, I don't know if the ways in college that was mentioned, but it would be the best use for Calvin to build on that, that tract of land after carrying through and several others.
I would just add a few things, and some things that specifically related to me. The twenty-nine acres, I think the college already owns that, do they not? I think they do. So that is a significant amount of acres equal to probably half the existing campus that is available. So, and it is, it has a lot of up front, and they're much more desirable properties. So, I agree with Mr. Wadley's assessment that this property is really immediately adjacent to SACCIOA, and its highest and best use is for the airport. I will say too, to the four, just to make a public record, I, my company has in time past worked for this airport board and for the gentleman who is currently the board chair. So I have investigated this, I'm happy to give you one of the causes I have and do recommend and seek to this, but I will be thankful on this for that reason.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Wadley. Just when we have some presentations?
We do.
Chester. Chester Goldier. Let's go to the rest. I don't know, Chester, maybe year plus?
Yes, sir.
When I first became chancellor, I began asking the question, like, if we have a catastrophe at X, Y, Z school, who do I call? How do I know what's going on? So we started the process, and I'm going to leave it to you, Bill.
Chairman, Board members, Chancellor, I think this will be fairly easy. We're basically going to talk about how we got started, which is very much to the conversation the Chancellor was talking about, what we've done and where we think we're going. So if we talk about how we got started, the Chancellor did invite me in one day for a cup of coffee and said, if something were to happen at one of our institutions, I'm not sure if they follow their plan. He said, matter of fact, I'm not sure from a systems point of view if we know the college has an emergency plan. So, and then, of course, I brought up the point that if they did have one, the question might be if they're any good. So he said, okay, go find out. So we embarked on the effort then to, I embarked on the effort then to determine what a good emergency operations plan for a institution of higher education would look like. And that's somewhat, my background's in industry, and that is somewhat different than an emergency operations plan for a paper mill or a chemical plant, due to open campuses and multiple buildings and other issues. So we did some research, or I did some research, with FEMA and the emergency management agencies, Homeland Security, and we, and I came up with a list of components for a plan. And originally, we listed about twenty components, twenty functional annexes, and about twenty-nine specific annexes. And I'll give you just a touch of what that will be. I listed it into thing, and it's in your PowerPoint, so you can go back and look at that. But if you talk about components, you're talking about things like table of contents, scope of the plan, purpose of the plan, concept of operations, those type things that ought to be in an emergency operations plan. If you think about functional annexes, think about if you have to respond to the emergency operations center, a functional annex is basically a manual for a specific area, communication. If I had communication for an institution, I would like to have a manual that I could reach that would have all the numbers I needed, that would have drafts of communications, that would have all the information that I have thought of ahead of time and put in this manual, so that in the middle of an emergency, I don't have to try to think of that. And then, of course, specific threat annexes are those things that a college or an institution should think about what would happen if we had an earthquake. And those are listed there for your, for you to look at, all the things we've considered. Then we requested that each college send us their emergency operations plan, which they did. Then we, I compared the plans and the parts of the components of the plans to the list of components that we had compiled that should be there. And then in April of last year, we brought together all of the safety and security contacts from all the colleges. This was the first time that we can determine in the history of the system that all the safety people got together in one room to talk about emergency plans and how we're going to move forward. So, and I know you can't read this, but just to show you, we did do some work. We went every school and every component. Yes, they had this component, no, they did not have this component. So educators like rubrics, so we made us one so it would look like we'd done something.
You got a calendar to print it out for?
Yeah, yeah, I actually had to print it on one of those huge printers. From that piece of work, we revised the components, and we revised it down to sixteen components, originally twelve functional annexes and twenty threat annexes. And you might say, well, why did you, why did you narrow? Well, unlike Hawaii, Hawaii and Guatemala, we don't have any active volcanoes in the state of Alabama. Therefore, it did make a whole lot of sense to have twenty-four institutions write plans of what to do for something that was probably not going to happen. So we tailored it more now to what we were working with and what we were working on. And then we went on the road and we visited each college. So we went and physically went to the college, sat down with the person in that college designated as their safety and security contact, and went over their plan individually. Your plan has this, your plan does not have that, you may consider looking at this, do you need that piece? From that, from those interviews, and we sat down and then briefed the president. And I'll tell you, often when you, if you've ever had a, operated a plant away from the home office, sometimes it's a little difficult to come in and say, I'm from the central office and I'm here to help you. Sometimes that's not looked on. I'll tell you that every safety contact and every president was interested in making sure that their plan met the minimum standard that we were trying to set. So after we met with those plans, they did edits, additions to those plans, sent those back in to me, and those, we approved those and set for them the next date upon which we were going to come back and do an audit. So if you talk about where we're going, the expectations are that each plan will be audited and approved by the system office at least every two years, which works pretty good. There's twenty-four institutions, there's twenty-four plans, you can do one a month for twenty-four months, make the trip, do the audit, do the edits you need to do. Remember that emergency operations plans are living documents. Every time that a school has a drill or activates their emergency operations plan, there's an after-action report, and very often, an edit made to the plan. The plan, we said we were going to do X, we need to do X plus two, and so those edits are always being added to, and that learning being incorporated into the plan. If there are mid-audit changes to the plan... If there are mid-audit changes to the plan, we expect those changes to come to the central office, so that we're aware of the fact that those edits and changes are being made. There is an expectation set that the staff, faculty and students will be trained as appropriate on the plan and that all records of training and drills have to be maintained at the college for review. And the chancellor has said that a plan that is not practiced is not accepted. So, we don't want these to be books set up on the shelf, we want these to be things that the, that each institution can and does use on a regular basis. Where are we going? In today's society, it's not a matter of if you need an emergency plan, it's a matter of when you will need an emergency plan. We, ongoing maintenance and refinement of the plans, learning from drills and training, making sure that all of our people and we are trained and we do exercises and practice. We want to hold professional training for our safety and security people, conferences and meetings, bring people in if we need to, and bring those safety people together periodically once or twice a year, so that they can exchange ideas and best practices in the system. I will tell you that you as a board could spend all of the money in the budget on emergency response and probably not waste money. It is a matter of how much we can do that's proven. There is no silver bullet in emergency response. There's no one thing that you could do and spend money that will prevent a catastrophe, catastrophe from happening at one of our institutions. It's a matter of have we thought through those, do we have plans to deal with those, and can we mobilize enough resources to help the institution get through that plan? Questions?
I want to get to, I guess, these types of plans, but do we have a system already in place to alert students for emergencies?
Every, after the Georgia Tech shooting, it was a requirement that all institutions have a mass communication system. And all of our institutions have a way to send out telephone calls, texts and emails to all of their students that are registered and staff and people. I'm on several of those and if you let a bad thunderstorm go through, I get plenty of texts about, you know, it's bad weather or whatever the emergency may be. So, yes, sir, all of the systems, first off, let me tell you, the original question was, do our colleges have plans? All of our colleges have plans that meet a minimum standard. Some, some original plans were excellent, some needed some work, but we have worked with those. Everybody's got a plan and every system, every college has some kind of mass communication system. Does that help?
Yes, yes. Chester, well, on, on the minimum requirements, is there, is there a minimum number of exercises or drills to be done each year?
We have not set from the central office that says you have to do one, two or three. They have to have drills. Each school has created a training plan, taken their drill, when they've had one. I have recommended to everybody, you know, things like active shooter drills, lockdown drills, need to be done at least once a year. But we have not set a standard. All the schools have a plan and have submitted their plans to me that says, this is what we're planning on doing. Several have had major drills. There are a couple now working, planning what I call a community drill, whether they'll bring in local police, local emergency medical folks, and everybody in the community to, to respond to a scenario. Which, by the way, is a big plan and it takes a long time to plan one of those drills with your local emergency management folks, but we're working on it. Any other questions?
Chancellor, I've talked to Chester about this too, is a, well, the first thing you're going to run into when one of these happens is communication. And so, I've asked Chester also to look at, call it what you want to, a strike force. When something happens, tornado, hurricane, whatever, we have a policy in place that says X, Y and Z are going to the site to support. We put Roger there, we put Ed there, we need the county, something to expedite the process of getting everything secure and then back up and running. Talked to some schools, that seems to be the communication pillar in this queue that I think we need to put a plug on some of it.
There's, there's no doubt that if you had a major catastrophe, weather, active shooter, you could quickly overload all the resources available, especially at one of our smaller colleges. So, a plan like Mr. Smith's talking about that would mobilize some other resources to be of assistance. What we can't do, and the chancellor and I have had this conversation, is we cannot manage emergency response from my government. There's no way in the world that if something happens at a campus in the Oathen or Boad, that institution has to be ready to manage that emergency. Could we mobilize some resources to help get over those? The fact of the matter is, is that an active shooter situation may be a three or four days before a campus could get anywhere close to back to normal. It would probably be 48 hours before you could get the police out of the crime scene. So, could they need some assistance? Yes. That's a great possibility.
Well, and Chester might add too, that we've coordinated with the emergency management folks of each of the city counties, which is necessary to be a team. I would also say that, you know, the governor just created a security council to discuss schools' safety. And I'm on that, council, Boone has been participating in that on a regular basis. And I could have a meeting Friday to talk about communication, how we can expedite communication. So, any teacher or instructor to, when you heard something, how, how quick could they notify? If law enforcement, so, so we still are not where we would love to be, but we certainly are, I have a different level of confidence than I do of even having. So, we still have a lot of work to do. Jackie? Jackie's first. You know, one of the things I've learned is once we make somebody a permanent president, they qualify to be working in addition to the president's chair.
Thank you, chancellor. Good morning, Chairman Thompson and board members. As you all know, that many of our system colleges have experienced enrollment declines over the past five years. And one of the things that the chancellor and the system office charged the deans of student affairs and the instructional officers with is providing some training and professional development in reference to enrollment management. We note that the enrollment issue is a national trend, however, that puts us in a position to be intentional and strategic about what we do in terms of enrollment management. So, in 2017, we were asked to provide some professional development and we did that as a joint effort between the deans of student affairs and the Instructional Officers Association. We solicited the help of Ruffalo Noel Levitz, which in my opinion, is an agency that is, are experts in the field of enrollment management. And an individual by the name of Gary Fretwell came down and did a day-long professional development session for our staff in the, across the institution, in the student affairs area and the instructional area. And then, we moved forward from there and had a follow-up discussion in reference to enrollment management issues at the 2017 ACCA conference in November. And what we learned from system colleges is that they needed some additional help in pulling together enrollment management plans that they could implement at their institutions. So, what we have done is that we have reached out to Ruffalo Noel Levitz again to see if that entity could develop what we consider to be best practices and those components that are critical to any effective enrollment management plan. In that regard, there has been a pilot established where they will be working with five institutions and those five institutions are Chattahoochee Valley, Drake State, Enterprise State, Northwest Shoals and Sneed State. And what we're charged with is determining, I guess, proof of concept. Ruffalo Noel Levitz are renowned for increasing college enrollments, but these institutions are going to work strategically with that organization to develop some strategies. So, what they've done is they've pushed out a, an assessment survey to the institutions to kind of draw a line in the sand to determine where we are, what initiatives we have in place, because we learned on the front end that many of our institutions have comprehensive enrollment management plans, but some of them only have recruitment plans, so it addresses just one component of the enrollment management issue. And we know that it stretches far beyond that. We need to incorporate everything from admissions to completion when you're talking about an enrollment management plan. So, Ruffalo Noel Levitz will do an assessment of our institutions. That assessment has been pushed out to all of the institutions, whether they're in the pilot or not, and what we're trying to do is establish where we are, so that we'll know where we need to go. And then, they will come to those five colleges and spend a day working with their staff. They will talk with the admissions staff, with the financial aid team, with those individuals who work on retention, those individuals who work on recruitment and so forth. And they will determine what we have in place to offer some strategies for us moving forward. I'm very optimistic about this pilot, because I, I know what the track record for Ruffalo Noel Levitz has been, and so I'm, I'm very optimistic that they will work with us and help us to work on strategies that we can incorporate at our institutions. I think that the one-day assessments will be completed in June in hope that we will be able to incorporate whatever strategies are recommended in the upcoming academic year, beginning with the fall. So, that's where we are with the enrollment management initiative. Other questions?
Just a comment, during this process, are y'all looking at any policies and procedures that are in place to negate enrollment coming in?
Yes, sir, we are. As, as part of their assessment, Ruffalo Noel Levitz has asked that the institution send them our, our current policies and procedures that we have in place, enrollment management, recruitment, whatever procedures, we are to send them those, so that they can evaluate and that be a part of their assessment with the institutions.
I would like to have a sidebar and give you some specific insights.
Okay, that would be great.
Pilot group was Northwest Shoals, Chattahoochee, Valley, Drake, Sneed and?
Chattahoochee Valley, Drake, Enterprise, Northwest Shoals and Sneed State. Any other questions?
From the consultant's perspective, did they give you an idea or do you have an idea of the success rate they've seen after going through these assessments or?
We, we do-
What would the increases maybe?
We do have an idea and it varies from, from institution to institution. In the literature that he presented, there was an example of an institution that increased their enrollment by double digits percentages, a double-digit percentage. I can't quote that right now, but yes, they have a tremendous success rate.
And I might add, just paying attention to this, talking with presidents around the state, I've had a number telling me that their enrollment is increasing at a significant level, some 10%. I, I think a lot of it is, well, I asked an architect to do a campus plan for one of the schools, can you tell me where on that campus a student could go initially and feel comfortable? Where could they live life? Do they pray their life to them and they struggle and they struggle and so I can't answer your question. We've got to change that, that's not an option.
Can this consultant provide cost projections? You know, because you can throw a lot of money at market, but they don't want to know what type of return on our investments. You know, how to find some attributes to, you know, pay you the success, six worth of dollars.
I'm not certain that that was included in the proposal. However, I'm sure that the cost factor will be incorporated in it once we get into working with the firm.
Is that correlation?
Right. But we, right now, it's a, it's a stab in the dark, because we don't know where the institutions are before the, the entity comes in to start working with us. And, and to the chancellor's point, I, I do want to mention that, yes, some institutions are experiencing some increases in enrollment, especially this summer, because some of them have already begun to work on their strategic enrollment plan. And part of that was to roll out advertisement in reference to the year-round appeal. And I think that the year-round appeal has had a significant impact on summer enrollment. So, that, I'm sure, will be, will play a major role in it.
It'll be interesting to watch, but my, I suspect that as we see economy change, you know, for years prior to this, this year, we've seen a lot of people who are unemployed or underemployed. And then, when the economy jumps back, we see a decrease in enrollment, because those people who are trying to better themselves go back to work. And then, we come to a point where we have very small unemployment and the market's extremely tight. And I think everyone is experiencing that. I, I am too, just finding people is very difficult.
Right.
So, at some point, I think the jobs that are out there, as we all know, are going to require training and people are going to come back to the field. So, it, it would be interesting just to understand that phenomenon, you know, and what we can, to be able to expect that in the future, economies are cyclical, this will happen again.
That's right.
So, it, you know, just let's learn a lesson and be able to anticipate in the future, that's my thinking.
One thing to touch on what Blake just said, we started programs, let's don't focus on the number of hours we instructed to teach. If we look at it in that perspective, we go in the morning with high school students dealing with enrollment, the afternoon go into unemployed, the night classes for the unemployed or underemployed can get off work. And let's look at filling those gaps and that way, we're opening up to more safer people.
You're right, we're going to have to be intentional and creative about what we do. Thank you.
Lydne, you did a good job training. Martha comes up, let me explain something. In September of 16, the chancellor, Art, appointed a committee to deal with credentialing. That committee had been around since that time. It was previously headed up by the president of Northwest Shoals. And after he decided to retire off the assumed role, committee is made up of a variety of people from across the state. And not all presidents, there were other categories of people on the committee. Eventually, the committee arrived at and made this report. I'm not sure that I fully comprehend or understand how someone drew conclusions that this was coming to the board as a policy to be adopted on an immediate basis. That was erroneous thinking from Art and somebody. However, there are issues out there that have to be dealt with. The credentialing of instructors, whether they be academic or whether they be workforce, what all of that requires and how we deal with that if we- what all of that requires, and how we deal with that if we're going to maintain the level of quality that we need to maintain. Then there seems to be a frightening element out there, that some folks just cannot understand that they need to work several hours a week. You know, it's a shocking environment to learn that if you work forty hours a week, that's a mistake. And I don't know anybody around this building that works, gets by with his forty hours. But there are people, I'm going to be looking. I don't mean that in somewhat of a comical way, but look, if we're going to move forward, as I said earlier in the board, and meet the need that exists, we've got to be better educated about how to solve that problem. We've got to know more detail and be data-driven, and then we're going to have to deal with the reality. See, there may be a course at some community where someone is just absolutely committed that course must continue to exist. And if you look at enrollment, and it's four or five students over a period of two or three years, and the legislature says you're going to have to look at outcome-based funding, then you have a conflict. And how do you rationally deal with all of that becomes an issue. Now, maybe the best choice is to, let's recruit more students, but that doesn't always happen either. So there's a lot of issues. These issues ultimately are going to have to be addressed, and they're going to be addressed through the cooperative effort of the faculties, the deans, the directors and the presidents, and folks from this office, and your folks, and then at some point, it will have to come to the board. And you'll need plenty of time to look at it and analyze it and talk to various people throughout the system. So this kind of knee-jerk issue that I heard was stirred around out there, I find that somewhat interesting and surprising, because we're not going to do anything that isn't deliberate in nature when you start talking about instruction. We are going to do it intentionally and as best as we can base it upon data. With that, Ma, I turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, chancellor, Mr. Thompson, and members of the board. I appreciate the opportunity to update you on the work of the credentialing committee. We were appointed in September of two thousand and sixteen, and I can tell you that I have a very committed and dedicated, as well as a creative committee, and I have enjoyed working with every one of them. We have utilized the technology available here and met very frequently with GoToMeeting, and so we're using that and making the most of that and decreasing our travel time so that we have more good, solid work time. I do want you to know that the committee has made some progress. We did recommend that one of the existing state word of education policies be deleted. That was really a policy that said we'd follow our policy six oh six oh two, so you've not seen that come forward. We also looked at a policy on instructor qualifications and one on summer employment, and you have approved an update to those in two thousand and seventeen. But our charge originally was that we really needed to look at what was our old policy six oh five oh two, which was faculty credentialing. That policy had been last updated in two thousand and five, and we knew that we really needed to take a good look at what was going on in higher ed, specifically in community college higher ed, and look at the academic inventories that we had where we identified the minimum instructor qualification for teaching in that program according to that SIP code. I can tell you, we spent a lot of time looking at that. We also spent a great deal of time looking at models in community colleges in other states such as Kentucky, North Carolina, Tennessee, Georgia, and Texas. I'll be honest, some of my research, including looking at some collective bargaining schools and some other institutions, so that we could get the full scope of what was happening, mostly in the southern region, but looking around to make sure that we could really formulate some ideas based on the very best policies we could. We also had some very basic assumptions that we used to guide our work, and one of those was that we are on a wave of change, and I know that's very difficult, and I know managing transition of changes is the most difficult component of that. But as our system is looking at a new ERP, a new college readiness initiative with developmental issues and outcome-based funding, then I know a lot of things have been thrown to people, and my basic response to that is that we're living in a dynamic and exciting time, because we have a new vision. We are going to enter what I consider to be the road less traveled, and so I don't expect it to necessarily be just smooth riding the entire way. But I will say that we looked at the basic assumptions, and one of those being that we are entering a model of outcome-based funding, and so engagement of every employee within the community college system is absolutely critical. If you look at Neil Raismann's work, who has done quite a bit on student engagement, he talks about great service really matters, and talked about how important it was to do the very things that the chancellor just spoke to when he asked the architect, where will students gather? Because if they don't feel warm and welcome, they're not going to have a good experience there, and we all know how they make that decision, they walk right off of our campuses. We also wanted to make sure that we align credentialing with a higher education model. What we have had in the past is very much patterned after K through twelve, and certainly you know that, sir, and so we've looked at that model, and we've tried to determine what it is that we really want to recognize faculty for, not only at initial appointment, but in their promotion and progression as well. And rather than it being based on something like increased academic credentials, which may be eighteen hours, thirty hours, fifty-four hours, we wanted to make sure that we emphasized what is important in our dynamic system, and that is teaching excellence, what's happening in the classroom, how are students performing, and how are we reaching those prescribed outcome measures that our colleges are being funded by, but that our students are going out and talking about. This is what I learned at this college. This is how I was treated at that college, and we wanted to make sure that when they go out and tell that story, they become our best recruiters for the future. The other thing that we were dealing with is that I've heard from many of the presidents how difficult it is for us to recruit new faculty. At Gadsden State, I have fifty-one of my full-time faculty and staff that are currently eligible to retire tomorrow if they suggest. And so as we face that, we want to make sure that we have a program in place that will attract that new generation of faculty that will be coming in, and quite frankly, we have found ourselves not to be in a competitive range for most of those things. And so what we started looking at was trying to look at some flexibility within our salary skills as well, so that we could really come forward with that and make better choices, have more opportunities. We wanted faculty to have a sustained record of excellence, and I don't think that's too much to ask, because I think that you expect that of us, I expect that of myself, and I expect that of those who work for me, and certainly our public expects that. And if you think about what was on our website, and may still be there because our pictures scroll, but our public has questioned the value of higher ed. And so we wanted to make sure that whatever we do with faculty credentialing would be something that would allow our story to be told in a way so that we have increased enrollment, that we are able to meet the needs of business and industry. Our current faculty credentialing process is purely based on faculty attainment of credentials and their work-related experience. It does not look at their annual performance evaluation, and in fact, our committee actually talked about the fact that there's probably going to need to be some work done on that level as well, some training and different expectations, so that faculty know where they could improve in discussions with their supervisor. They probably know it themselves, too, but that we really have to have good plans for that in the future. We know that hiring faculty in certain disciplines will get tighter and tighter for us, and we know what business and industry is asking for, and so we want to make sure that we address that. And we also want to make sure that promotion and progression has a return on investment. And so what we have been looking at in our draft document is progressively increasing the complexity and sophistication of the performance elements for people as they move through rank. I don't think that it's unrealistic to expect someone at a higher rank to be able to contribute more than a brand-new faculty member, and so that's what we've looked at. Just to let you know what we've done to try to make this work the best that it could be, our committee worked very diligently from December until March to craft a draft policy, knowing that it wasn't perfect and knowing that additional input was needed. And so on March nineteenth, all of the policy and associated documents went out to our institutional presidents asking for feedback. They were given a period of time to offer feedback, and we waited two weeks, or just about two weeks, and sent that same packet out to all of our instructional deans. And we felt like we needed that, because even though we had great representation on the committee of our central office staff, we had several presidents, and some of them have moved on, as you can hear, but we had instructional officers on that committee too. And so we had a good breadth of representation, but nothing beats having the broader input from our system constituents. And so that information went out in March. It was returned to us, and in April, our committee spent time looking at every comment that was made. We addressed every comment in a summary document and sent that back out to every college. Every president and every instructional officer received those documents. It was also made aware to us that the dissemination of those materials was more widespread in some colleges than others, and so we started looking at how we continued to vet the policy so that we would have the broadest input possible. We came down, and in early May, we had a meeting with the chancellor and just briefed him on where we were with our process. Several suggestions were made at that time, and they were incorporated into the draft policy. Also obtained a legal review on that and incorporated those comments into the document as well. And we took the opportunity in the summer conferences to have open discussion in our instructional officers' meetings, as well as in the presidential summer conference that was just held. And in fact, just so that you'll know what we are doing to make sure that we vet this process appropriately, we, in our president's meeting yesterday, discussed the need for presidents to, using their own resources and their own methodology, to disseminate this information to faculty to gain feedback, so that we get the broadest view possible. I have given them until July eighteenth to get that feedback back in, but I did say, if you need more time, you just need to let me know. I tend to operate on deadlines, and I figure everyone else does, and so I thought it might be best if you just have a deadline that we shoot for, but I wanted to make sure that everyone has an opportunity for their voice to be heard, understanding that the decision that you all will ultimately make, and the recommendation that the chancellor will ultimately make to you, will consider the vision and direction of where we're going. And again, I think it's going in a different direction from where we've been. I think it will be the road less traveled. I think it will represent what I have been referring to in the committee as a paradigm shift, is a total change of what we've done. And I do think that generates some fear and concern, and what does that mean for me? But at the same time, when I look at what our students need in our system and the students that come to us, the change is worth it, because we are there to serve students, and our faculty are absolutely key and essential to creating that wonderful and rich learning environment that equips them with what they need when they leave the college. But they are also accountable, just as I am, just as you are, every employee in the system is. And so that's been the work of the committee. We have generated a document for initial appointment. We've generated a working document on promotion and progression and the associated documents with that, and so I am glad to answer any questions that you might have.
In this process, I understand where you're going, do you address anywhere in there the onboarding of new instructors? And what criteria they have to have to come to work at the school? And I'm looking more on the workforce side. You know, you've got a thirty-year truck driver that's never had an accident that wants to come and take the CDL courses, but he doesn't meet the criteria of courses that he has to have to come to work with the institution. How do you address that?
Well, our old policy had categories, and those categories had actually been drawn from the SAC C O C Principles or Faculty Credential Guidelines at that time. And so we had an A, B, and C grouping. We have, in terms of the onboard, we revised those, and we now have three groupings, and they are specifically aligned with SAC C O C, but we have them aligned with Academic or Health Sciences, which would typically be your transfer courses or potentially programs that would have specialty accreditation requirements for faculty credentials. And then we have a CTE one and a CTE two. And in that, we have tried to make an allowance for those folks that would come into a skills training program, or into a short-term certificate that is not reviewed by SACs and might not have to have the same credentialing as someone who taught an associate degree or in a transfer program. However, we have left the onus on that to the individual college, because, let's just say, that we took a truck driver and brought them in, and they were teaching in a non-credit skills training program. If we ever wanted to move that individual over into teaching something where, of course, could count for credit, then it's up to that college to make sure that that individual is qualified. And so the onboarding process in that respect is that we have identified those categories, we have identified attached documents that are academic credentialing inventories, and they all fall under the Academic or Health Sciences. It would typically be those transfer courses, or CTE one or CTE two. There's a lot more to the onboarding than just being sure that we place them correctly for credentials, and our committee did not look at that overall onboarding process, but I think it's absolutely crucial to faculty's success, so that they can become inculcated into the Alabama Community College system and to the college that they're employed.
In one of the SRV conversations going on, several institutions in other states have said, okay, you don't meet the criteria, we will onboard you, and you've got X amount of time to get your certificate, rather than saying, no, you can't come at all. Is any of that being looked at as a path, so they can come in, give them dates, timelines that they have to meet to keep them going?
Well, for those who are ranked as faculty, no, that isn't our old policy, Mr. Smith, where someone might be able to obtain an industry credential within the first year. In our current policy, it is not in there. Could that happen? It certainly could happen in CTE two, depending on what that college was actually looking for and what they needed. What CTE two requires is that the person have an associate degree and industry credentials, excuse me, or a high school diploma or a GED equivalency and appropriate industry credentials. And so if someone was coming in at that level, we did not include that you can get that within your first year. Now, if that's something that you want the committee to consider, because again, it is currently in a vetting process, and that could be included, but we just have to remember that when we do things like that, we've got to be vigilant to follow through.
Dr. Lab, the survey that you made reference to, that was distributed to all of the presidents who did that, who do that again in mid-July, I think it is. What is the stated purpose of that survey?
To get feedback from faculty, the very people that are affected by faculty credentialing policy, because presidents and instructional officers and deans have already had the opportunity for feedback, so they've seen it. And so the intent is to make sure that those that are affected have an opportunity to see it and also have input and voice into the process.
Do you feel confident that when that survey is distributed, people are going to make the right determination of what the purpose of that document is designed to do? I'm just curious.
I think there'll be some misinterpretation, yes, sir, I do, but I think a lot of that will rest on the shoulder of the presidents, who will determine their methodology and how they will send their message out. I also think that some of the document could be open to lots of interpretation, and I've heard some of the things that folks are concerned about, because when you move from an algorithm, which is what we have now, and that is you have fifty-four hours, or you have thirty-six hours, you have thirty hours, and this means you're ranked here, it's just an algorithm, like a guided pathway, like I might use in nursing. But when you take it and say, no, I want you to demonstrate to me through objective evidence a sustained record of excellence in your teaching performance for promotion and progression, then it becomes how well they prepare that document and what kind of evidence they present. And so I think that that is an area of concern for everyone. I think it's very common in higher ed to see that, and this is not a university model, but yes, that's what's done in the university as well. But I don't believe that this is a university model, and I don't think it's asking too much for a faculty member, or for me, to account to you, what I'm doing to demonstrate outcomes at Gadsden State either. And so what we're asking them to look at... And so, what we're asking them to look at is what would be the indicators and what is the evidence? And so, does that create some interpretation? Yes. And so, when you ask for that input, would that create some potential for confusion? Yes. And I'm hoping that interference will be run with that at the presidential level. I have considered my own methodology and what I'll do, so that I have a presidential blog, and not only will I be sending things out, I'll be blogging about it.
The next question I have is not designed to try to imply that I'm asking to be involved in the process, because I'm not.
I can believe you're on a policy committee, correct?
Would your advisory committee or any board member have any objection or have any concern where I have to raise a question, would it be prudent for us to see a copy of that document so that as questions start surfacing within the community and at our community college colleges, we at least have some idea of what's going on and what's generating those questions?
Well, I'll refer to the Chancellor, and if the Chancellor approves, I'll be glad to forward you the ten documents I've sent out to the presidents. I didn't run them as one document, Mr. Fan Troy, because there are attachments to the policy. The policies are very simple, they're one sentence. The procedures are more detailed. And in our initial appointment procedure, there are a number of associated documents, because that is where a faculty is initially ranked and where their step placement is assigned. And so, we wanted to make sure that if we're stepping away from a guided pathway or algorithm, that we have provided some instructions so that we have some internal consistency within the college, and as much internal consistency within the system as we can have where professional judgment is used. But yes, sir, I'll be happy to do that if approved by the Chancellor.
That's the point, you why I'm asking that question, because in this role as a board member, one of the things that I have apprehension or disdain for is that, is to get a question on a matter of the board system, that I have no knowledge of what it's about.
Yes, sir, I understand. I get those daily, too.
I was a serious hall of halls, stressful and unglued.
Understood.
I think I'll tour neighbor Trish.
Okay.
And if we can do everything we can to make sure that you have some of that stuff, is that this kind of got out of hand, the board should have. I'll be able to take those steps.
I'll work with Trish on that. She and I work well together. Other questions?
Martha, if I could, again, after the meeting, a sidebar, but I don't wanna give you a specific answer.
Okay, I'd be glad to.
I understand that, I'm glad this has taken place. It sounds like a tremendous effort. I appreciate the effort, I appreciate that everyone's involved. I think it's appropriate. You know, the rest of us in the working world are called upon to judge and be held accountability how well we do our work and how well those who work for us perform their work. And, you know, being accountable is good and appropriate for all of us at every level. And I think having a clear process by which you do that, a consistent process by which you do that is absolutely important. And I think you'll come to that through this. I realize there'll be interpretation. When you're dealing with professional positions, there will always be interpretation, because we can't easily just count how many widgets we make in our work shift, and so, that's part of it. But that's why we hire professionals to do that work. And I'm confident that ultimately, this will be very beneficial in helping us to reach new levels of faculty all across the system.
Well, I'd like to give you one example, and I'll leave it at that, but I could give many others. One of the concerns that I heard was that there were faculty that were concerned that one of the ways that a faculty member could demonstrate excellence is by their students' pass fail rates. And many of you know that Mr. Tony Holland has gone around to all of our campuses and talked about that. And it's not just your pass fail rate, it is what you do in response to the pass fail rate, because many times, there are circumstances that are totally outside of a faculty member's control, and there's nothing they can do. If a student leaves town, has a baby, has a death in the family, and so forth. But I can say this, when you have a faculty member that has a consistent record of pass rates that are well below the average for that group, and nothing is done to improve them, then you do have to say, is there something going on that this faculty member could do to improve? And I think that's all that Tony asked for, and that's all that's implied in this policy. And it should be something that I'm looking at every day, and every one of my presidential colleagues are looking at. I mean, I've told faculty before, I've made decisions in the morning I didn't like by the afternoon. And so, what do you do? You try to correct it. And that's all that we're looking at in relation to that. Well, again, thank you for the opportunity. Yes, we have put in a lot of work into this, and we will continue to do that as we try to provide the very best documents that we can that will sustain our faculty and encourage and motivate them, because this whole concept that we're moving forward to will reward those that are producing the most at our colleges. Thank you very much.
And the thing that we have to keep in mind all the time, there's a method behind some of all of this. She mentioned Tony, Tony's traveling around all the time, holding workshops with instructors, teachers, that's what it's about. Talking about how do we improve instructional retention. That's what it's about. It's about what are we doing to help students succeed? It's not about a lot of other things. Now, we can devise a system as we go forward where we all can feel good about how we're doing, if we're doing our jobs. But it's hard to make those people who are not willing to do the work, who are not willing to get totally committed to doing everything they can to help the student succeed. It's hard to make them real happy. But we are committed to and obligated to do everything we can to help students succeed. That's what our mission is about. Anything else?
Very good, great presentations. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate everybody's hard work on this. Anything else? Any other comments from the board? Thank you, everyone, for being here and your interest in what we're doing. We stand here.